Will be provided at no cost to the Virginia Department of Transportation. And whereas the town of Abingdon hereby acknowledges the Virginia Department of Transportation's recreational access program may provide up to a maximum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars unmatched, and up to an additional hundred thousand dollars matching funds for a project, and requires matching funds up to a hundred thousand dollars from the town of Abingdon for estimated eligible project costs over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And whereas the town of Abingdon hereby guarantees financing of all ineligible project costs, project costs exceeding the project allocation under the recreational access program, any program required local matching funds if applicable, and all costs exceeding this program allocation will be provided by the town of Abingdon. And now that therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Abingdon hereby requests the director of the Department of Conservation and Recreation, Department of Historic Resources, to designate the Abingdon Sports Complex as a public recreational area and to recommend the Commonwealth Transportation Board that recreational access funds be allocated for an adequate access road to serve said park area. And be it further resolved that the Commonwealth Transportation Board is hereby requested to allocate the necessary recreational access funds to provide a suitable access road as herein before described, and be it further resolved that the town manager and/or his designees be authorized to act on behalf of the town of Abingdon to execute any and all documents necessary to secure the maximum amount of funding eligible under the recreational access program.
All right.
Well, Ken, I think you're missing a zero.
Counsel, what's your pleasure on the resolution?
Can we have this described in a little summary that like, you know, people like me can understand that? I mean, I understand a lot of it, but there are certain parts in here that I don't understand. And I do want to address what road we're talking about, the access road on the last paragraph, page two, I'm sorry, third paragraph in the bottom, page two, name of the road. Is that Robertson Road that we're talking about?
No, it's not that the road didn't have a name. It's, it's access between the parking lots and through the parking lots. It's not a, it's not a, a named street. It's just, the sports complex.
It's basically from Cook Street into the project itself, right?
Yeah, there is a.
Cook Street extended?
It's, it's at the end of the traffic circle, Robertson, Cook, Cook Street extension, I guess. It's a roads in between the parking lots, right Kevin?
That's what I just said.
Yeah. It's, it's from that roundabout into the sports complex to both parking lots, a lane through the two lots and a turnaround. It does not include the parking areas themselves.
Right.
Okay. I just want this clear so the public can, you know, myself and whoever else has had the problem understanding this, that they, it's very clear what we're doing, please.
All right, counsel, what's your pleasure on the resolution?
Since this is a work session, can we adopt this?
Yes.
Okay. You sure about it?
Yes. As Mr. Bell, but we have discussed this before. We can adopt this resolution in a work session, can we, Ken?
All right. You may.
What's your pleasure on the resolution?
I'll make a motion when we adopt that resolution.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Kim Carver, roll, please.
That's right, right here.
That's right.
Yeah.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Wedge?
Aye.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
And Mayor Craig?
Aye.
We got another resolution.
Second resolution is a resolution of the councils to the town of Abingdon for a separate bike way at the Abingdon Sports Complex. Whereas the Abingdon Sports Complex is owned by the town of Abingdon and is to be developed by the town of Abingdon as a recreational facility serving residents of the town of Abingdon, adjoining localities and the Commonwealth. And whereas the facility is in need of adequate bicycle access, and whereas the procedure governing the allocation of recreational access funds is set forth in section thirty-three point two dash fifteen ten of the Code of Virginia, requires joint action by the director of the Department of Conservation, Recreation, Department of Historic Resources, and the Commonwealth Transportation Board. And whereas a statement of policy agreed upon between the said director and board approves the use of such funds for the construction of access facilities to publicly owned recreational or historic areas. And whereas the council has duly adopted its zoning ordinance pursuant to Article seven, section fifteen point two dash twenty-two eighty, chapter twenty-two, title fifteen point two of the Code of Virginia. And whereas it appears that council, that all requirements of the law have been met to permit the director of the Department of Conservation and Recreation, Department of Historic Resources, to designate the Abingdon Sports Complex as a public recreational, I think facility should go in there. And further permit the Commonwealth Transportation Board to provide funds for appropriate access to this public recreation historic area in accordance with section thirty-three point two dash fifteen ten of the Code of Virginia. And whereas the right of way of the proposed bicycle access is provided by the town of Abingdon at no cost to the Department, Virginia Department of Transportation. And whereas the town of Abingdon hereby guarantees that the necessary environmental analysis mitigation fee simple right of way for this bike access project. And utility, relocation, and adjustments if necessary will be provided at no cost to the Virginia Department of Transportation. And whereas the council acknowledges that pursuant to the provisions of section thirty-three point two dash fifteen ten of the Code of Virginia, this bike way once constructed, shall be regulated and maintained by the town of Abingdon. And whereas the town of Abingdon acknowledges that no land disturbance activities may occur within the limits of the proposed access project without the consent of the Department of Transportation as a condition of the use of recreational access fund. And whereas the town of Abingdon hereby guarantees that financing of all ineligible project costs, project costs exceeding the recreational access program project allocation, recreational access program required locality matching funds if applicable, and all costs exceeding the recreational access program allocation will be provided from sources other than those administered by the Virginia Department of Transportation. And whereas the town of Abingdon hereby acknowledges that the Virginia Department of Transportation's recreational access program may provide up to a maximum of sixty thousand dollars unmatched, and up to an additional fifteen thousand dollars matching funds for a bike way access project, and requires matching funds up to fifteen thousand dollars from the town of Abingdon for estimated eligible costs over sixty thousand dollars, up to ninety thousand. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Abingdon hereby requests the director of the Department of Conservation and Recreation, Department of Historic Resources, to designate the Abingdon Sports Complex as a public recreational area and to recommend to the Commonwealth Transportation Board that recreational access funds be allocated for a bike way to serve said recreational area. And be it further resolved that the Commonwealth Transportation Board is hereby requested to allocate the necessary recreational access program funds to provide a suitable bike way as herein described. And be it further resolved that the town manager and/or his designees be authorized to act on behalf of the town of Abingdon to execute any and all documents necessary to secure the maximum amount of funding eligible under the recreational access program.
Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure on the resolution?
I think a motion to adopt it is, is sent.
Motion by Vice Mayor Patterson to adopt it.
As amended, right?
As amended.
As amended, because we've got to add facility.
You accept that amendment as amended?
Yes, I do. I accept it as amended.
Kim, I think where they use is the area.
Area, state facility.
Okay, any discussion? Kim Carver, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Wedge?
Aye.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mayor Craig?
Aye.
Kim, since we passed two resolutions that were on the wrong form, do we need to rescind those?
Probably.
Kim, do you have any things with you to discuss the resolutions?
If it's adopted on February the fourth, I'll look at the resolution.
Well, Ms. Kingsley's looking that up. I'd like to add, I'd like to add to the minutes, the map of the road that we talked about in this resolution for the recreational access road. I'd like to put that in with the minutes. I'll tell you about that in a minute. I'm sure you heard me. So that it's clear.
It's minutes of this being.
Yes. Because someday we're all maybe on.
It's just been added to the sports complex.
It's, it's, it's on the sports complex, Johnson, I mean, it's great, it's great. We, we don't need to put that in the minutes, I'm sorry.
Someday we'll be on, you know, you know.
Well, it'll be built by that time, so everybody know where it is.
Mr. Craig, if you want to go with Ms. Harley's presentation, I'll get the book, I don't have internet service here.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll go, we'll go ahead.
Okay.
Well, I think that you can just describe it generally. I mean, the, the resolution.
Can we do it, do we, do, need separate motions for it, or can we do it all together?
There was only one. There was only one, I think, and that's why it got split.
No, we passed two, two.
No, there was one, there was one resolution that had the wrong dollar amounts and the wrong language.
Oh, it was just one resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Good, I hear a motion that we rescind the resolution of the town council regarding the bid I plan for the sports complex.
So we're.
I believe we rescind the previous resolution regarding the sports complex.
Motion, uh, Mr. Gray, to rescind the resolution. Send your second, yes, second by Vice Mayor Patterson. Any discussion? Kim Carver, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Wedge?
Aye.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
And Mayor Craig?
Aye.
We have with us today Ms. Peggy Curly. She is going to give us a presentation on census. And we're going to welcome you to Abingdon, Peggy.
Thank you.
Do the thing.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. I am here to talk to you a little bit about the census and how it's going to impact our town and areas of the state of Virginia. You have folders in front of you. During the presentation, I will ask you to reference page eleven. And so if you guys want to follow along, thank you for your help. You're welcome. You can do that. Just tell you a little bit about the census. It is a U.S. Constitution mandate, Article one, Section two. Here's a, here's another. Okay, the census helps proportion seats for the U.S. House of Representatives. It conducts the redistricting of our federal, state, and local levels. The most important part is the census information is going to help distribute six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars to state and local governments. So the numbers that's been provided to me to share with you guys is what that looks like is for locally for the state of Virginia, it's about sixteen hundred dollars per person, per year for a ten-year period. And these are monies that will come back to our locality for things like human services, education, Department of Transportation, things like that. So altogether, there is fifty-five programs that this money will help fund, including local grants. And then, you know, it does just help us prepare for our future needs, such as census information is used, and a lot of folks don't know it, but the information that comes from our lunch school forms that I am guilty of, of not completing, you know, we didn't qualify for free lunch, and I thought that was the only reason why to complete that. It's not. Those numbers that come back from those forms actually helps them know whether we're outgrowing their schools, if we need new schools, if our schools, if our population is declining, if they need to combine schools. So the information is used in lots of different ways. The goals for the 2020 census is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. So that's, that would affect us, such as if we have folks that came here to live, say during the summer and left during the winter. We want to make sure those folks know how important the census is to us locally and that they're here April first to be counted, because it's wherever they are on April first. If you think about, another example would be Emory and Henry, you know, you have kids there from everywhere. But they don't need to be completing the census from where they are originally from. They need to complete, complete the census on where they're living, working, and going to school. So those are some numbers that are on this sometimes is the, is the universities and local colleges. There is some changes that has been made from 2010 census to 2020, and one of the big changes is that the survey is now going online. There's already been some notices mailed out asking people to go online and complete the survey. Now, whenever I was looking at the statistics for our area, it does show that we have in our area a larger aging population that may not like computers and may not like to do this online. The impacts of not doing it online, we have three data centers across the nation, and the paper forms, which will be the last absolute way to fill them out, will go back to those data centers. And based on how they get the information put in determines the numbers that are sent to the president. And those numbers have to be turned in by December thirty-first of 2020. They will actually come back to the local localities in April of 2021. So if they get overwhelmed with paper applications and can't get them processed, that could affect our numbers locally. So some ways that we can offset that, you know, is to have like a local census day, maybe at our libraries or, you know, maybe at our schools or somewhere that people know that they can come and they can get help with the census and that they'll have internet service there. This just kind of shows the timeline for the Department of Commerce right now in the Census Division. You know, they started with the address canvassing, which some of you all may be aware of. They started that in August of 2019. We're kind of working our way through right now in a, in a phase that is called an education phase, and that's basically where we're doing these presentations and trying to get the word out to the public. But in February 2020, after the education and motivation phase, we'll, we'll move into counting our group quarters. And those will be places like our jails, children's homes, things like that. And then on Census Day, that'll be April first of 2020, that is when we're hoping most people will go on and fill out their census forms. After that, then we'll start moving into phases where they're hiring numerators to go around from door to door, knocking on doors, asking people, you know, to complete the census. The statistics in your area right now is you have right at twenty-two percent of individuals in Washington County that is not, or that did not participate in the census in 2010.
How do you know that?
I will show you right here in just a second. There's a, there's, there's a place that you can go and pull it up, and I'll show that to you. One other thing that we could really use some help with is the Census Bureau is hiring, and they're hiring lots and lots of people. So to kind of break this down, from a recruiting manager up, you'll probably see those in the local office. And our local office is in Reno for this area. From recruiting assistant down, you'll see those positions hired here locally. We need several hundreds of folks to apply for these positions. You're probably looking, you know, between sixty and eighty people being hired in each county in order to complete this work. It does work a little differently before, you know, there's some of these positions only last a couple of weeks and they're over. But what they're doing now is it's a six, eight week period. They'll go, and they'll ask them, do you want to continue working? If they say yes, they'll move on. Once that assignment's up, they'll, their name will be put into a bank of new assignments, and they can be chosen to work those assignments. So this task could go out through September of 2020 until we wrap everything up. I kind of went over this with you a little bit, you know, our local office is in Reno for folks that need to apply for these positions. There's two different ways they can do that. They can go on the USAJobs.gov, or they can also go to 2020census.gov. Should anyone need help, there is one eight hundred or one eight five five number here that they can call. And here kind of shows kind of some of the wages that we're seeing. Remember, for a recruiting manager up, you'll probably see those in local offices. But for that recruiting assistant down, you should see those here locally. So you're pretty much looking from thirteen fifty to sixteen fifty an hour to complete the task here that we need done locally. I did give you some flyers that you said that you put out front, and I can email one, but if you know anyone that would be interested. From the information that I have been given is our senior citizens folks have actually been the biggest folks attracted to these types of positions. You know, they don't last a long period of time, those kinds of things. But they're actually worried that where all this stuff is going online, that folks may not just want to deal with that. So we're definitely going to need to hire some folks.
Did you say thirteen fifty to twenty-five fifty? I didn't hear you.
It is thirteen fifty to sixteen fifty for the recruiting assistants down. And the other positions, you see nineteen to twenty-five, twenty-five fifty, that those, those positions there are normally in our local offices.
Thank you.
Now, what I'm really here today to talk to you all about and need your help with is forming a complete count committee. Now, if you'll look on page eleven in your book, this kind of shows a committee and what that looks like. And all begins with our mayor, who, who has signed a chair.
We're going to have you on video.
Remember those numbers I was talking to you about a few minutes ago? It's motivation for this. So, you know, what we would like to see happen is for you to pick some folks that you would like to have on a committee that could help us educate our community. Some folks which you can kind of look at up here, to have on there is definitely our business industries, and we have a lot going on here. Our school board superintendents would be great folks to have there, someone representing our senior citizens. They could actually reach out and hopefully help with the folks that, you know, that are not going to like to go online. Human services would be a good area. The statistics that I'll go over with you in a minute when I pull up this website show that we have about a thirty percent poverty level here. So if you, not saying that the whole twenty-one point something percent of folks that didn't participate is in that poverty level. But, I mean, if you look at that, that is a, you know, that's a huge level. So they need to understand that the money's coming in by completing this, the monies that are coming here for the programs for the benefits that they receive. So if you had someone to represent them, low income housing would be a good one. You know, our economic development, planning commissions, just folks that could help us get the word out. The goal is to not add to your workload, but maybe just jump in on the things that you have going on locally, like we have the Washington County Fair. You know, if we could put out some information during the fair, if we had festivals, we can get the census information out there. Johnson City is doing something. This is their hundred-and-fiftieth year of being a city, so they're, they're just including that on as their decennial block party. So they're just adding the census into that. You know, look at the things you already have going on and just try to get the information out to the folks that way. One of the school projects that I keep hearing people talk about to get the information back to the parents is to have the schools to do a census project. I know, you know, when the presidential election came around, they did something in the schools to teach the kids about the election and how to vote and, and, you know, the difference between the parties and things like that. So if we can get our, you know, school superintendent in and get that into the schools, that information's carried home.
As a town in Virginia, of course, we're part of Washington County.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is there a possibility Washington County will be doing one of these committees also?
What, well, could possibly be. Each one of the tracks are different, and the track that I'll show you will look at Washington County. But to give you an example of why it would be so important to really team up, I mean, if the county and town could come together, I know Smith County, that, that's what they're doing. They town mayors are really trying to get together and just do something countywide. I was telling our mayor here today that there is a street, if you go up Main Street and go to Pecan Street up here, there is a street straight back from that that a huge portion of the folks on that street did not complete the census last time. So we can't tell you the address of where these folks are at, but we can show you your problem pockets within your locality. So it is possible to see a couple different count committees, town and county. I would suggest that everybody pitch in together, because, I mean, if you want to, if you want to set up a committee and have your school board here and them sitting on three of these, you know, if everybody could come together.
You're saying that we can buddy up with the county?
I would, yes.
See, we don't have a school board of our own. The town does not have a school board.
Right.
The county does a school system.
Right.
So it might be better for all concerned if we do that at a county level.
Yeah, if you team up.
And the town cooperate in that effort, and, you know, maybe we want to do our own, we'll have to, we'll have to.
And that is what I'm seeing. Unicoid County in Tennessee, whenever I went to speak with them, that is what their, their mayor's doing, because they also, you know, have, they have a county mayor and two town mayors. So they're all coming together to, to get it out across the county.
Sure they have missed it, but did you tell us when this committee needs to be formed?
Uh, no. Well, yesterday. So as soon as possible.
I'm a powerful mayor, but I can't work marriage.
Yeah, all of this is just kind of coming out, but yeah, as soon as possible. And what the process is, is once you figure out who you would like to have on your committee, and that would be a good time to reach out to the county folks that you know, you know, hey, we got to do this, let's do this together. You know, if it's going to take any funds or whatever, just team up together to get those things done. So as soon as possible, just as soon as you figure out who you want on your committee, I could come back, and then we will do a complete count committee training. And that will basically show you all exactly what this committee will do. And it will help you do things such as form a name for your committee, give everyone that is on your committee a task. So everyone has their task and they know what they're responsible for, so it's not so much extra work. And then, and then we'll move forward from there. So whenever you all meet, I won't be part of the committee, but I can come in and help and help guide you. So, so that we can do that. But as soon as possible would be great, because we, I mean, really, we do have a lot of work to do. You know, whenever you think of twenty-one point something percent of your, of the county who's not participating. Well, you know, I remember in two thou, in 2010, I remember whenever the census came around, knocked on my door. I didn't know who they were, and I didn't talk to them. I didn't even go to the door. You know, I didn't know why, and I didn't understand, you know, the importance of it, and I think that's what we need to do.
Ms. Harley, quick question. Is there something that we can put on our social media sites?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The hiring little flyer that I just gave you, that's something you can fit out there, because we're, you know, the reason why the hiring is so important, it's not that, okay, we need to hire a bunch of people, we want you to referral to us. Is if someone comes here, say, from the federal government and starts going around knocking on doors, how many people you think is going to answer the doors? But if they see a local face, and we can hire some local people, then the likelihood of them to participate is much more likely. So we're going to need to hire a lot of folks. So yes, you can do that. Once the count committee is formed and the committee gets together, I would also put a posting out there of the committee, you know, you know, the work that we're doing and why we're doing this work, just to try to, you know, to get the information out to folks. So yes, I would definitely do that. That's a good idea. Jakerson County on the Tennessee side, I've been running back and forwards, but it seems like Tennessee's already got some things up and running. They even created a hashtag. It's Jeff Counts, hashtag Jeff Counts, or Jeff Co. Counts, that's what it is, hashtag Jeff Co. Counts. So, you know, that could kind of be catchy to, you know, some, maybe some of the millennials to kind of teach them, you know, why this is important. So we can come up with some different ideas.
Sounds very much like you serve a large area. How, how, how large an area are you responsible for?
Uh, well, I've been from meetings all the way from Knox County all the way to Martinsville. But we do cover, and at the end it'll kinda show you, but the Census Bureau that covers the state of Virginia is actually housed out of Philadelphia. So it covers nine states. So, you know, we are Virginia, Tennessee, Delaware, Maryland, Rhode Island, Jersey, Ohio, West Virginia.
Wow.
Virginia, yeah. So it's a huge, huge, yeah. Huge, huge region, huge region. So the phases that, you know, of the count committee that we will be working through is the education phase. And that's basically starting up the buzz, getting people to hear the census is coming, why this is important. And then we will move into, you know, the promotional phase. And then that's kinda where, you know, we're at at the fairs and festivals and whatever you have going on here in town where we can be near people saying census is coming, you need to complete this and this is why. And then the last phase of that, the February twentieth through June twentieth, that is actually whenever people need to complete the census form. So we need to set up things, giving them an opportunity to do that. Again, you know, I know in our, we set up schools for voting, you know, for them to come in and vote. Not saying we should do that in our schools, but, you know, again, in the library or maybe here in the town hall or just somewhere where people were at that they would have internet access and it would be convenient for them to do. It's about ten questions is what it's gonna be. And another idea that I heard in another county that they were gonna try to use to get the information out is putting the census information about, on their utility bills. So, you know, I know you all do here, do that here. You know, your sewage bills, your water bills, you can talk to your local parent company because the census information's very important to them. That's, that would be an easy and inexpensive way to get the word out. So whatever it is that you already have going on, just add on to that. Maybe, you know, talk to Commissioner revenue's office, you know, whenever they send that out to, you know, put the census information on there. Team up with your nonprofits who are doing VADA, you know, to, for taxes because the census, that'll come right after tax season. So if there's somehow we could stick this information, get people to at least tell them about it, give them a flyer, things like that. So we don't have to put a lot of, you know, extreme effort into it, we just gotta be creative with what we're already doing. So I can help you with some ideas. And then, of course, this is the slide from what you all see in your book, to kinda give you an example of what that looks like. And this is just basically saying, these are some of the ways that we could use some help. Getting the information out about us hiring. If you know of any places here in the town or county that could provide a space for us to do some training or some testing. The libraries have been real good, I've been about to visit them. Our Virginia Employment Commission's been really good about space. If you know the group quarters, where we're gonna start counting the group quarters first. So if you have residential institutions that you know about, you know, making sure that we know about those so we can get them counted. Any kinda shelters, things like that, I know Bristol City's struggling with, you know, their homeless population that, you know, has increased so dramatically, it's overwhelming kinda. So if you have anything like that going on here, and then completing this account committee. This is the information to our Philadelphia office, so it just kinda gives you an email address and a telephone number should you ever need to contact them and the number for the hotline for the recruiting division. And that is that, but I will show you what your track looks like. And this is what the Washington County track currently looks like. So we have twenty one point three percent of the population that did not participate last time. And if you look down through these numbers here, the higher the number, the higher percentage of pockets that we need to focus on, such as, okay, high school diploma or no high school diploma, twenty one point five nine percent. So, okay, that's a huge pocket of folks out of the twenty one point three percent that did not participate. So how are we gonna get the information out to them? Maybe we need to team up with our Department of Education to, you know, to get some information out to them. If we look on down through here, again, I mentioned the poverty percentages were up. Maybe we can reach out to our low income housing, our social services, our health departments, places like that. So whenever you're forming your committee, think of those people who are already there that we could just get on some materials to that can be talking to these folks. And in some areas I see the language barrier, but I don't really see that so much here. It is increasing, I think there was like a five percent increase from last time. But if we ever needed someone to go out and even address that, then we, there's census folks that are being hired to speak, you know, particular languages. So.
I can't see those numbers, do you have any handout or you could give us later?
You know, I could probably screenshot this and email it to you if you would like to send it to everybody.
I can share it, yes. That'd be great.
Yeah, because, yeah, they're really important. And the track, whatever, you can pull this up, and you all can pull this up and actually look at it yourself. If you will just Google Rome census tool, it'll pull this up. And then you type in the location that you would like to look at. The darker the color, the higher the percentage of non-response is. So when you look at Washington County in Abingdon specifically, which our town, we're lit up blue, pretty much. I mean, so we're, we have a large pocket of folks that are not participating. So whenever you zoom in on this information, and I'll send you the link to this too so you can go in there. Again, it won't give you addresses, but it will tell you what streets that we need to focus on. So those are some kinda things to look at, but I'll, I'll definitely, I'll send this to you.
Thank you.
You are welcome. So the next, and that's all of my presentation, but the next thing that we need to do is, you know, work on who you would like to have on your committee. And then set a date to schedule a training so we can come back in and kinda get the committee started.
Do you want us to do this today?
If you want to email me or be the correspondent, I'm completely content with that. You follow up with me later, but those are, those are the next steps that we need to do.
Have you done, will you be doing this presentation with the county?
I will, yes. I will be.
You will be?
Yeah, I will be. You know, again, if you all have, know of folks in the county you think that would be good contacts to partner with and you wanna provide name with their names, I will most certainly talk to them. I, I think you would definitely be more beneficial as a group. You know, if all the towns would just come together and participate together, you know, in the county. I think, you know, you put all your efforts together and be more beneficial.
Thank you, baby.
You are so welcome.
Well, if you, I mean, you talk to them, tell them that we're willing to work with them, we'd love to.
Absolutely, I sure will, I will, I'll get that together. And if we could just do, if we could manage to get that together and just do one big training, you know, and get everybody together so everybody knew their task, that would be great. Thank you very much for having me today.
Thank you, I too.
Thank you.
Okay, council, the next item on the agenda is update on bids to complete climate control at the turn of this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We sent these bids out to three different contractors and we went with the lowest bid, which came in at twenty five thousand dollars. The next lowest bid was around thirty two thousand dollars. We have, the contractor failed to submit the required documentation that we require, W9 business licensing OJ and an installation drawing for the HVAC system. So staff, we contacted a couple other contractors and ended up getting a really good bid at twenty two thousand to two fifty. That contractor's in the process of submitting all the required documentation. Once that documentation is in, it'll be sent to DHR for approval of the installation. The only downfall on this bid is that the contractor would be able to start until May. They're booked through in the next about sixteen weeks. We feel like that's not that long a time to wait to have it installed and to get it at that price. Cause this price also includes the removal of the old system in the previous bid. So we think it's a really good price and we're diligently working on getting that completed.
Okay, do we need to take any action on? Thank you, Jake. Well, you got the next one too?
Yes, sir.
If they don't cost the parking lot and walking band?
Yes, yes, sir. I think before I came to the work session, I sent you all the archaeological survey completed by us and me. That was submitted to DHR shortly after I sent it out to all the council members. Once we get correspondence back from DHR, we'll continue to move forward the project. Right now, we're looking at an estimated cost of sixty five hundred dollars for the construction of the path with an additional twenty five hundred dollars for base stone on the parking lot. And it's up to council if they would like to spend an additional twenty five hundred to thirty five hundred dollars for the brown peat gravel that matches the, what's currently at the muster grounds. So you're looking at thirteen thousand total.
Do you have that money or do we need?
I've, I've got that to do that.
Counselor, do you all want matching gravel?
Yes. Now, just to clarify, the matching gravel, is that just on the path or in the parking lot, in the path or?
The path itself will just be the base stone.
Okay.
The parking lot will be, and then that's again, y'all's decision if you want. It can be regular base stone or we can put a layer of base stone with the brown peat gravel on top of it.
I want pregravel, how about you?
I think it would look better.
I do too.
All right, you got your answer.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Based on the discussion with Terry Baxter, Director of Main Street regarding the understanding.
Talked to Ms. Baxter, we had a meeting with some of the town staff and George Rumlin of Department of Housing and Community Development. Main Street is in the process of revamping the way they do, and will be concentrating on two or three major tracks in the future. Ms. Baxter has indicated that she's working with her board to determine what their focus will be in the upcoming year. I've suggested to her that she develop that work plan and submit it as part of the memorandum of agreement between Main Street and the town of Abingdon. So that a year down the road, you can look and are they performing to what they agreed to do in this plan of work? The current agreement doesn't really have much of anything in it that was specific as far as deliverables. For instance, one of the things she would attend each and every town council meeting wasn't to necessarily prevent, present any reports, participate in any way, but that was a deliverable according to the agreement, was she would be at every single council meeting, which I think would be not really valuable for the town or for her. I'm hoping that by the time she presents her budget request, that she will have more details as to what the plan of work for the upcoming year would be. And then each year, as part of the budget process, a new plan of work would be submitted so that the town had a better idea of what Main Street was going to do in the upcoming year for the community.
We were looking at that agreement, has it expired or is it gonna expire or they just suggest changes or what was the status of that?
There is, there was actually two agreements. One was with the Virginia Main Street, which was expiring. The one with Abingdon Main Street, I think runs through the end of this fiscal year, December third. So what I was suggesting is both of them get on the same.
Schedule?
On the same schedule. I think the Virginia Main Street was a two-year agreement.
Is there any downside to the Virginia one not being in place while we sort out what we're doing?
I don't believe so.
Okay, anything else on that? Discussion of sports complex and Greensboro Road budget, Mr. Videm.
Ken, did you provide them a copy? I've taken and updated the expenditures through, for both the sports complex and the Greensprings Road to the latest bills that Mr. Banner has paid. As part of this, we have also begun pursuing a potential grant through AEP. Hopefully we'll hear something back from that within the next couple of months. I was given some information about a soccer foundation, US Soccer Foundation grant that is a potential, there's an application period believed coming up in April on that. Once I was told about that grant, I just did a Google search and came up with the Baseball Tomorrow Foundation, which is MLB and the Players Association. They recently provided a grant to put lighting into a baseball field in Tasswell County. So I think that there's some grant opportunities out there that may help with some of the closing that we're just beginning to, to explore. And I have not included any of those in at this stage as far as potential revenue or revenue sources cause it's still very early on, but.
Any questions, Counselor? Ken, you all were, have you begun corporate fundraising yet or?
It has not started, reached out, I will send another email today that we were gonna have an initial meeting and scheduling hasn't come together yet. So hopefully I'll send a reminder out and hopefully we can get that underway in the next week or so.
Okay. Discussion regarding additional pickleball courts, Mr. Worley.
Yeah, Mayor Craig, after our last work session and everything, we, Mr. Videm and myself went over and met with the community center. Met with Natalie Graham and Cindy Bond and we did a little site visit. We looked at a couple of other sites that we have, but looking at that site works very well for a lot of reasons. It provides a facility there that, you know, in the event someone would have an emergency, then would, you know, then there obviously would be somewhere around having the availability, that's a kind of a side note with, for the safety standpoint. But there's plenty of parking there, their restroom facilities would be available. They provide, you know, they do lunches and all of that. So it would also get more foot traffic into the community center, more recognition, therefore if there, you know, as a side note for that, you know, they're getting more people in financially, supporting the facility. So I think that could be a very positive thing. Tyler Vensel, engineer, and I've looked at, you know, some of the potential as well there from the, it would be the area to, if you're facing. it would be the area to, if you're facing the facility, it's an open lot to the left. Mr. Vittum and I walked that area as well, uh, looking at where we thought it would lay out the best. And they have, they have some future plans for their, around their facility, but don't really have it drawn on paper. And so, uh, we kind of encourage them to kind of put together a little more of a master plan so they kind of know where they're gonna put things. So if we go and locate something there, it wouldn't eventually interfere with something that they'd want to do. And I don't think what we're going to do there would do that. Uh, we've actually included that in our fiscal, uh, twenty-year budget. Uh, that was submitted to Mr. Banner and so I think that could be a, you know, is a good source for that.
Did you check, did you check flood planes up there, Ken?
It is. It's on the lower end. It would be a problem, but if we put in a concrete base and, you know, what we're gonna put in, uh, we'll have a concrete all-in-one base and we would still wanna consider doing the reversal court that goes on top of it. So anything, you would have that plain surface, the water would go through and it would, it would go with the natural drainage. It's already on both sides of that.
Is there a, a real structure there or?
No. And so I think what we would do is moving forward, next step, of course, we would, you know, have to ask Mr. Bell to develop the contract and all that, that we would have to work that out for that. But for the site, I think we would, uh, we would actually go and do a little more engineering on the site because we don't wanna, we could go in and put what we need and would be fine, but their next development might require something else. So I think we'll think this out a little bit. We're not gonna develop anything till after July anyway with the budget. So that'll give us some time to kind of investigate the site, do, um, look a little more how the topography lays out, making sure that's gonna be our, the best site, not only for us, but for them and their future and what they wanna do. So that's kind of why we were encouraging them to do a little bit more of a master plan with it. So they kind of know what they're want, want to do in the future. Uh, they had no timelines. So, um, what we would be, would be the first step in that development that they do over there. So basically, when we put it in, their future will go around whatever we do. Now, they do have an idea for a playground, but that, you know, we talked about that, but they've already got that set to be on the other end of the property, uh, opposite of the building. So it wouldn't affect anything that they're doing with the schools they have there. Plus, it gives the school...
The court would not be subject to flooding or, or...
Right.
Not be damaged by flooding, but I don't wanna do anything that would increase the flood potential.
Right. And I think we would look at, you, we, that's what we wanna look at there, that we're not gonna, you know, create an impervious surface that's all of a sudden gonna create runoff issues on down below. So I think there, there will be some, um, water buffering done on the opposite, you know, on that, the, be the left side courts. That way, um, any water created, any runoff that we would create then would be mitigated into the natural flow of the land. And so we're not gonna, you know, create, and that's why Tyler and I were addressing that as well.
Can I ask a question? Just, I mean, just from my naive way of thinking. Why would we put these blackouts direct to one of the courts that we have out there already? It's already lit. And, I mean, with, with, you know, offending the tennis folks, I'm sure, tennis is a dying sport and it's the statistics prove it. Just take, you've got four courts out there. Why don't you just reduce it to three, put in, I think it'd hold probably three pickleball courts with the cabin easily? You have lights, saves money, it accomplishes what you need and you don't have to get into a agreement with another agency over playing surfaces.
Well, they, the pickleball people ask for their exclusive courts. They're having shared courts right now and it's not working for them, so...
But nothing saying you turn the, turn one of those courts into just pickleball. One with the, one of the courts would be like three pickleball courts and it's all to be used for ever.
We'll, we will be taking something away from the tennis pickle and creating a controversy that we don't need, I think.
I think, I think if you remember in the springtime, too, we fought the, the issue of the Coon Center with, uh, the high school tennis team didn't have enough room to play. I think you all received several calls on that, but they used to...
Yeah, they've already contacted me.
Yeah, they, they used the Coon Center as their home court. I mean...
Yes, sir.
So I, I thought, I think you might be ripping the scab off of something that you've already got.
I agree.
We also worked with the, you know, and I encouraged a long time ago is, you know, we also have the courts over on Church Street. And so encourage the tennis team, you know, you've got boys tennis, the girls tennis, rotate courts, practice it. Use the courts over on Church Street as additional practice courts. And I think Jennifer and Melissa and them have actually approached the tennis team and I think they're actually gonna do that this, this season. And they're gonna use both, both set of courts, cause when the tennis team was developed before, they were at the country club and coming over and, you know, I think there was a transportation and driving. And so it's, and those courts were just two courts sitting there using middle afternoons, no one over there. So it's a great place for them to go use and, and practice, uh, cause it has lights so, you know, they can go over and they can do all their matches in at the Coon Center. So hopefully, I think some of that's gonna work out for them.
If we build pickleball courts out there at the community center, will they have to be lighted?
No, I mean, that could be something in the future to look at, but...
That'll upset that residential livelihood.
Right. And that's why we just told them that what we were looking at was just putting in the daytime playing surfaces.
Kevin, do y'all, uh, y'all have a mechanism to stay in, I understand we've got the pickleball club. Do y'all have a mechanism to keep them informed where we are and what we're thinking?
Direct center staff does, you know, and we can, we can send, I can send this information back up through them and they can relate that back to the, to the club up there.
All right.
So what's the general idea with the community center? Will we lease that property from them for some extended period of time or what?
That's how I think we would do, kinda like what we're considering with the, you know, long-term lease and self-renewing it. That way, we'll be there.
Okay, anything else on pickleball? All right, next item on the agenda is update on sale of Summers Law, Mr. Bell.
Um, the deal was closed on thirteenth. Uh, deed was recorded. Um, town deposited a hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, as I recall. Um, it was sold to, the deed was to Linda A. Summers. So congratulations, accomplishment.
Thank you. Congratulations to you. You had a successful auction, I think. Thanks to Mr. Stewart, I guess. Was he the one that kept...
Guess so, yeah.
Up in the bed.
This will probably be the last time Summers Law Office appears on your agenda.
Okay, the next item is my discussion of funding, uh, special projects. Uh, I've, we've been working pretty much ever since we've been a council on trying to, uh, get some projects that have been needed for some time moving. And, uh, we've got a couple of meetings and, uh, we've identified a list of projects there in your packet. I'd like for the town council to, other council members who may not have been involved in this directly, to, to take a look at that and that, uh, the next meeting, uh, we can, uh, add any, uh, projects if you think are urgent. I feel that it's urgent that we, that we get retirement back on track. Uh, I think, uh, it's useful as a facility if we could get it repaired and fixed up. Fields Pen House, uh, certainly needs repairs and I don't see any need in stabilizing the foundation and I'd go ahead and, and fix it up so it's not an isolate, anything. We, we need that sidewalk down from Kaiser Furniture and, uh, to Walgreens and the crosswalk at Walgreens because First Bank and Trust is gonna have a little employees down there and, uh, Restaurant is across the street. Al, I think you wanted that sidewalk to go all the way to Dairy Queen. I believe there's an estimate in there for, for that.
I want it to go all the way to Bristol, but...
I did drop by.
Why don't you write a petition?
I drove by there just to look on the, at the space on the side of the road there and it is tight.
It's tight. There's a sidewalk in there right now.
There's space there, but it's tight.
But that's, that's probably better than, uh, putting a sidewalk is probably better than leaving what we got there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Did I see a pedestrian bridge in Willie's?
Chuck, you might wanna weigh in on this. What we talked about is, uh, to fund these projects is, uh, I think there's been some discussion, I wasn't involved, but there's been some discussion with Davenport. And, uh, Chuck, you might wanna tell us what their thoughts were on funding this.
I think Ken and I met with them last week and I think that they were, we just, we didn't specify what projects or what it was we did to skip general. We're gonna repair some of the historical, historical property and put, improve some infrastructure, whatever. And their recommendation was based on our, uh, debt level was, uh, do the bond issuance for the combination of those projects and, and, uh, uh, issue those to, to fund those repairs. That even when we close out the line of credit, we will still be well under or beneath our debt capacity. So, uh, that was their recommendation to do. There's, you know, uh, we could look at some local banks, but after speaking with them, I think, and I'd like Ken speak for himself, I think that might be the, the path, the path to go as far as completing what you wanna try to get done.
That, that certainly was their recommendation that when the, the bonds have to be issued by twenty-twenty-one? And they had some suggestions and, and wanna come to a council meeting when they need a little bit more information, but to discuss with you in detail and, and, uh, sort of how we got to where we are now. And I, I think, and we explained to them that some of the members, and maybe not any of the members, had had this full discussion because you weren't here at the beginning of when all this started, of sort of getting everybody up to speed about the bonds that are gonna be issued. But their suggestion was that you lump in if there's other projects to be done, that that would be the, the way to do it, would be to request a million dollars, a million and a half dollars more, uh, in that bond issuance all at once.
And they also said one of the things that they would be more than welcome to do was sit down with you individually as council members or in pairs so you're not violating any rules and just, just kinda lay everything out, walk through the whole financing, uh, scenario and how, how it works in the process and where we're at compared to our peers. Uh, so you have a better understanding of, of kind of, uh, where they're coming from with their numbers. And, but, uh, they were more than willing to, to do that, uh, and, uh, you know, if, if that's what council would like to be, to, to do, Ken and I can make sure we can arrange it.
There's some discussion about, you know, interest rate volatility in the market and, and those types of things and, and timing of when you want to issue the bonds and, and that type of thing, so...
Since we got three new members of town council that haven't been involved, I think we should have some of those meetings. Davenport probably.
We did. Didn't we do that once already then? I mean, they came and explained the whole scenario.
Oh, I didn't.
I mean, I didn't even got the book, the cloud book. I mean...
I didn't remember that.
It was good, too.
I thought that was before you...
I guess to be clarified, they're going, we talked more about the one point five or one million.
Oh, okay, the addition, okay.
To show you how it would fit into the current debt structure, including, you know, when we gotta make a, make a decision on the, on the line of credit on, on when to do that. So it's gotta give you some different scenarios. You wanna do part of it now, do, you know, so it was a little more, I guess, in-depth on what we're actually looking at instead of just focused on that one project.
If we're gonna do that, I'd rather do it over at regular meetings when, you know, when we can just all be there and, and everybody...
Do it at a regular meeting?
Everybody here the same time, yeah.
Sorry, man.
Couple of other things.
Yeah, I can, I can, I'll contact them and...
That's fine. I, I think leading up to that, it probably would be good if you set up some individual or, or like Chuck said, two, but members of two to sit down and talk in more detail prior to the meeting so you're sort of up to speed when they come and give their presentations. So if you have questions to ask during the meeting, then you can ask them.
Yeah, they, they, they thought that'd be a good idea to give you an opportunity to ask questions just one-on-one. And then, you know, if, when you have a meeting with them completely with council, that way you may already have some ideas of some, some specific things you wanna address or whatever from those discussions.
As an example, Chuck and I met with them for an hour, an hour and a half.
Yeah.
So Mike, I wanna add that to a regular meeting.
So maybe two by two meetings might not be a bad idea.
I think that would be good. I, I thought it was very helpful just to sort of explain the, the global situation and, and more specific things, like I said, about the market and, and term limits and, and interest rates and all those types of things that you could ask them in specific.
And what about you? How do you feel?
I, I'd still rather do it at a regular meeting.
Well, I think you can do that, too.
Do both, is what we're saying. They do both.
We need to discuss, you know, I'd like to do a summary and tell the citizens what we're talking about.
Sure.
If you could borrow seventy million dollars, uh, by law, we're...
I don't believe, I'm retired.
We'll say no.
I'll quit. I'll quit on that one right now.
There was a question, if you don't mind me backing up just a second, about the pedestrian bridge. To my knowledge, that was gonna go to the Park Street project.
There is one there, but I think what Al was saying, Cindy, is that there's a pedestrian bridge in, in the sidewalk project.
In the cause dis...
Yeah, I saw that. I've got it right here. What is it, seventy-five?
I'm not sure what that is.
All right, it's in the, it's in the West Main Street pedestrian project between Holston Street and Reedy Creek Road. Uh, there's a pedestrian bridge in there for about twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, you know, rationally the only way you're gonna get across that route back to Main Street interstate. Yeah, that's an, that's an estimate and somebody's idea of, of, of a good way to do it, I guess. While we're at it, we could use one on Russell Road, too.
I think we, Mr. Chafin, get a, a grant for that. I believe he did. Yeah, we got a grant for that.
Not a, not a pedestrian bridge.
It's a crosswalk, but it's a Cadillac. It's like a hundred and some thousand, I wonder.
We got a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the crosswalk.
Couple, couple of little pieces of information on the future projects. I talked to Tyler Vensel. He said that the Patton to Holston sidewalk project would probably score better and have a better chance of being funded if the town were to commit to put fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars in local money into the project. Wouldn't be a guarantee that it wasn't funded this year with zero dollars, but he said a project that size, usually if there's local money being put into it, and he was suggesting fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars. Applications on that would be due in August of this year with, uh, award and construction after the first of twenty-twenty. So that's a, uh, potential piece. Uh, the other one is I had a meeting with, uh, some people from Spectrum Design that had done a fire hall in Giles County for us. I was talking to them about some of the historic properties that the town has and they said that there's a potential to leverage historic tax credits on some of the historic properties, which could return, uh, they're normally sold at about seventy-five percent of the tax at a discount. And it was somewhere between thirty and, I think, thirty-seven percent of the construction cost, would come back in the, as cash money into the, uh, project. And basically, you would need to develop a, uh, L L C that would become owners of the property while the tax credits were still being, uh, uh, were still in effect. And at the end of five years, that would dissolve and the property would revert back to the town once the tax credits had expired. But that's a potential, uh, they're supposed to be sending me some more information that provide you about how that... They're supposed to be sending me some more information that provides you about how that works. The town of Blacksburg did that with the building that's now the town hall up there.
I think there's been a fair amount of that in Marion related to Emory's medicine.
What does the LLC sell the tax credits? I never thought about that.
Yeah.
I never had enough money to, it didn't get any good.
Right. We're, we're tax exempted, of course, but yeah, those are valuable to other people and there's a market for that type of thing.
Anything else on that item? All right, the next item is discussion regarding council salaries. Mr. Vinum asked me about this and I didn't know much about it, but I found out that our charter requires us to report a five-man committee to set our salaries. I guess we need a motion to authorize Mr. Vinum?
Let me, this one, the code section 15.2 dash 14, 14.7. Basically, it says notwithstanding any provisions of a charter of a town or any other laws, the town council may establish compensation to be paid to council members and the mayor. I'll let Cam confirm, but I believe that that means it doesn't really matter what your charter says. Town council can review it. You don't have to go through the citizens committee if you so choose.
That's what notwithstanding means, yeah.
So we set our salaries. We've been, we've always had a committee, though.
You can't.
Okay. All right, council, what do you want to, you want to set your own salaries or do you want to?
I don't want to do anything.
In the committee, what?
I don't want to do anything, man.
Well, we've got to decide to either leave them like they are or change.
Not doing anything leaves them like they are.
You want to leave them like they are.
I mean, I know it's 50 cents an hour.
The first question is tradition is act that we want a committee. That's my point. Do you want to point a committee or do you want to set it ourselves? I know Al wants to leave it like it is.
I want to ignore the whole thing.
Do y'all, does anybody want to point a committee?
It really isn't a big deal to me.
Okay.
I'm cool with leaving it like it is, I mean.
All right, then what do y'all want to do about your salaries then? Al wants to leave it the same, leave it the same.
Yeah, I mean, what's the difference in 50 cents an hour, 53 cents an hour? At the end of the day.
Sandy, what about you? You want to leave it like? All right, so we'll leave our salaries like they are and I stand corrected because I thought the charter trumped the.
We didn't.
I thought this notwithstanding meant something else, but.
Yeah, I, I read that. I read that this morning and it was kind of like, well, the way I read it, you don't really have to go through the committee process unless you want.
Okay, all right. Okay, that completes our open session of meeting. And we have a couple of close sessions. Al, you want to take a break for?
Yes, I would.
All right, go ahead. Let's be in recess for a few minutes so you can come back and do the closing. Yeah.
Right. I, I didn't know if you'd seen the. Okay.
I'm going to use your man.
Yeah, I was getting taste about that. What did she say? I'm like, leave me alone.
You know, when she was talking about the Pacific, I started looking for it. And then I was like, oh.
See, you wouldn't want to be in a room with my wife if you had that grammar. She's, she's, oh, she fix you. I have to be like pins and needles. And I'm a country boy, you know? But she's like, that's not how you say that. That doesn't make any sense. I'm like, thanks, your man.
I had a councilwoman over years that was an old English school teacher. I would send out like a weekly report. She put red circles on it spelling it. Send it back.
My wife said.
Well, I had to take it out of the phone to get some more specific. Thank you. Thank you.
The Pacific side of that.
I've not got any calls or emails. Like, we surely will go out.
I wonder where she's from. Is she from Aberdeen?
She's seen what she was.
We're ready to go.
Talk about.
Van Nuys Drive from Gofield.
Drainage problem.
Van Nuys Drive. Probably more up.
You want to talk to Drainage Problem?
You're right.
Okay, we're back in open session, out of recess. We need a motion to go into closed session. Say it. Read it for us then.
Yes, sir. Close session pursuant to two point two dash three seven one one A as an Alpha Three in the Code of Virginia. Nineteen fifty is amended for purpose of discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public use or the disposition of publicly held real property. For a discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Motion by Vice Mayor Patterson, seconded by Mr. Bradley. Any discussion? Kim Carroll, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Quitch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
And Mayor Crick.
Aye.
I'll never get to strike.
Just like you're not going to be on the town council.
I'm not sure that the process is quite as, as formally as, as we do of coming in and out of each particular issue.
That's a lot of work.
I think what, what I've done, we were in Parisburg, that if there were several things we could say, we're going in to discuss property acquisition, legal, and...
To just group them all together?
Yeah, and go in one time.
Okay, he's talking. All right, we need a motion to go back into open session.
I move ahead.
I'll, moves will go back into other session.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Webb. Any discussion? Call roll please, Kim.
Mr. Bradley.
Uh, uh.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
And Mayor Craig.
Aye.
Whereas the Council of the Town of Avenue, Virginia has convened in a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with a provision set forth in the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, where Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, requires a certification by the town council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore it be resolved that the Council of the Town of Avenue, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters love to exempt it from an open meeting requirement by Virginia law where discussed in closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. In only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the town council. Mr. Bradley.
I so certify.
Ms. Quetch.
I so certify.
Mr. Webb.
I so certify.
Ms. Patterson.
I so certify.
And Mayor Craig.
I so certify. Okay, we have another close session. We need a motion to go into closed session again.
Okay, some mayers liked him.
Okay, we got, okay, we got two more closed session, yes.
Yes.
Can we do them both? Can we group them together?
Group them together.
I've always been told you can't, but I don't, I don't know.
If Kevin in one of them, I can grab him.
I think it's counter if you go in now.
Okay.
Let's keep doing what we're doing. We can move hard way.
All right.
We can do some research on that.
Okay, you want me to make the motion, Mayor Craig?
Yeah, and read it.
Okay, closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the purpose of discussing, discussion, excuse me, or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public use or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Motion by Ms. Patterson to go into closed session. Sir, second.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Webb. Any discussion? Call roll please, Kim.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
And Mayor Craig.
Aye.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
You all ready?
I'm ready.
You two ready to tell?
Nice, Tom.
You will.
Are we on yet? Alright. Yes. Okay. Alright, so the motion, we go back into open session.
I move that.
Motion by Mr. Bradley.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Quitch. New discussion. Call roll, please, Kim.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Quitch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
And Mayor Craig.
Aye.
Whereas the Council of the Town of Avenue, Virginia has convened in a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with provisions set forth in the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Where Section 2.237-12D of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended, requires a certification by the Town Council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved, the Council of the Town of Avenue, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirement of our Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Town Council. Mr. Bradley.
I so certify.
Ms. Webb.
I so certify.
Mr. Webb.
I so certify.
Ms. Patterson.
I so certify.
And Mayor Craig.
I so certify.
Okay, we need another.
We have a motion. You want me to read it?
Yeah.
I'll do this one.
Okay, go right ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we enter into closed session pursuant to 2 point, uh, Section 2.2-371, 1A29 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the purpose of discussion of the award of a public contract involving expenditure of public funds, including interview of bidders or offerers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where a discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy in the public body.
That's the most eloquent motion I've ever heard.
Really?
Good feeling.
I second that.
Motion by Mr. Bradley. Second by Mr. Webb. New discussion.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Call roll. Call roll.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Quitch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb. Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
And Mayor Craig. You did say aye, right? I heard you.
Okay. Does it need to be in closed session or open session? Okay. Is there a motion? We go back into open session.
Should I go?
Motion by Ms. Patterson, second by Mr. Bradley. New discussion. Kim, call roll, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Quitch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
I so.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mayor Craig.
Aye.
Whereas the Council of the Town of Avenue, Virginia hereby, here, has convened in a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with provisions set forth in the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Where Section 2.237-12D of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended, requires certification by the Town Council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Council of the Town of Avenue, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirement, by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Town Council. Mr. Bradley.
I so certify.
Ms. Quitch.
I so certify.
Mr. Webb.
I so certify.
Ms. Patterson.
I so certify.
And Mayor Craig.
I so certify.
The next item on the adjourned as council reports, I think Sandy has something she wants to add.
Yes, I just want to request, and I believe the council will agree, we have our packets delivered to us already, and I really want to appreciate, uh, thank Kim for working on that, and I'd like to have the work session packets as well. Um, I was missing a little bit of the work session packet, must not got through the machine or something, and I just think that I can't, there's, I'm getting older, you know, I might not be able to see as well. So, anyway, that being said, could we please have our packets delivered, all of them, work session and regular, who's name? Thank you for what you do for us.
Alright, off.
Quick question, please. You all scheduled your Department Head Budgets meetings for Tuesday, March the 5th, and Wednesday, March the 6th. The night of the meeting, I don't think that we, um, set a time. So, you all will look at your calendar, I think you surveyed and said that it was discussed maybe 1:00 to 5:00 each afternoon?
I think, I think this kind of.
Let me, I'll probably put the time on my calendar, when you know.
I didn't have time on mine. I remember me saying it was kinda in the afternoon, but I don't remember. I think I just blocked the afternoon.
Yeah, I did, I blocked it. Sooner that we can make the data, because it's gonna be long.
Yep. 5:00 and 6:00.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a time either. So, y'all wanna meet at 1?
Sure.
1:00 to 5:00 each afternoon, if that way I can post.
Okay. Kim, you wanna, you wanna say what you give us these for?
Sure, you guys have a conference call with Berkeley Group.
Sure, that you guys have a conference call with the Berkeley Group, uh, on February the twenty eighth, and those are materials to get you up to speed on what that meeting will be about. It's next Thursday, is that right?
Just a second. And that will be upstairs. We'll have to have a video up there to go with closed session, the closing conference, but it doesn't work, so it'll be on the third floor.
Do we want to do this to you? It's like a, it's like a, just like about that one. Do we want to do that in this building?
Well, I can clear the third floor for you, but.
I think if you're in the third floor conference room, close the door.
Is anybody search for bugs or anything up there? You mean, you mean insects?
Or else we're going to do it a long time.
We'll, we'll provide noise.
I don't.
Third floor conference room.
That's the play.